Recording in progress.
Welcome to the what is it today? Twenty six. June, what did you say? Twenty five. Yeah, welcome to the Tuesday, June twenty fifth meeting of the planning commission for Monterey. Can I have a roll call for?
Sure.
Commissioners.
Chair Dawson.
Here.
Vice Chair Blues.
Here.
Commissioner Brassfield.
I'm present.
Commissioner Fletcher. Commissioner Freeman. I'll mark Commissioner Freeman absent. Commissioner Latassa appears to be absent as well, and Commissioner Silva is also absent. I'll go ahead and announce the staff members present. We have our planning manager Levi Hill and myself, recording secretary Erica Barrera.
Okay, so consent agenda that that involves the the minutes from June eleventh. Has everyone had a chance to look at those?
Yes, I moved to approve.
All second.
That's a second, first and a second.
Okay. Chair Dawson.
Yes.
Vice Chair Blues.
Yes.
Commissioner Brassfield.
Yes.
And Commissioner Fletcher.
Yes.
Okay, the minutes have been approved. And I can remind the public how to participate if they'd like.
General public comments. Public may speak to any item that is not on the agenda and that is in the city of Monterey's subject matter jurisdiction. Does anyone want to make a comment?
And let's go ahead and remind our viewers viewers at home how they can participate.
Sure. Information on participating in this meeting and providing public comment, including remotely by Zoom or telephone, is on this meeting's agenda, which is online at iSearchMonterey.org. Remote commenters will be muted until it's their turn to speak, and a timer will be shown on the screen. If you're connected on Zoom, the timer is accurate with no delay. In the chamber, we recommend keeping phones and devices muted to prevent audio interference with the meeting. Thank you for participating in your city government.
So does does it strike you that that your little speech has to be allowed in the home anyway? They're already listening.
I guess if you're watching by the telephone or by the TV, it's helpful.
Possibly.
Yeah, and while they may be viewing, it's not they always our public doesn't always know how they can participate or comment during the meeting.
We are live on Comcast channel twenty five.
Thank you.
We have no hands up?
There are two attendees online, no hands raised, but we do have a member of the public in the chambers that would like to provide comment.
Would you like to make a general comment that's not on the agenda tonight?
Yes.
Please come up to the podium.
We have a microphone just for you.
Figured I might be clamoring with many people at your meeting, but. Can you hear me? Okay. Hi, my name is Kim Judson. I live in the city of Monterey and I have a small remodeling project that I'm working on, myself doing some of the work. Mostly to upgrade. It's a seventy year old home. It needs a lot of work, so I'm doing as much as I can afford, including some electrical, some plumbing, trying to convert as much as I can afford again from gas to electric to deal with energy efficiency and climate change issues, et cetera. The only construction part has to do with kitchen and bathroom, and there's a very small bump out about forty five square feet, very small project altogether. But part of it is a carport. I was going to convert, again, very small garage, about eleven feet wide to a utility because it has a washer and dryer in it, et cetera, since I moved there twenty six years ago, and have a carport. And I was told in April when I submitted my application and fees that it was a very simple project. It wouldn't take very long and and wouldn't be, you know, subjected to architectural review because if you see the house, it's very funky and it's in a neighborhood where no one can see it anyway. And it's also within the footprint of the house, so the carport is exactly the same as where the garage line roof line is. It's not jutting out into the, you know, further closer to the neighbor's property line. It's not going to jut out toward the front of the house. I have sixty seven foot driveway length. Unfortunately, only five feet on the side from my house to the property line. And so, anyway, all that to say, I provided all the information, the plans. I had to do revised plans to make sure the five foot was indicated. And of course, it takes many weeks for comments to come because they dribble in. They don't all come at once, and I am new to this. And now I've just received, oh, sorry, just received a comment that I have to have a full survey done to confirm the property line for the carport. I'm not sure why, because it doesn't jut out any further than the current house, but that's going to cost far more than the carport itself. So that is going to cause me to have to abandon that whole entire part of my project, eliminate the carport, eliminate any work that we're going to do to try and improve kind of safety from all these extra rains we're having. And so I don't know if there's ever a request for a waiver, although I'm afraid to do that because everything takes thirty days and we're already three months into this and and that's hard on an almost seventy year old gal. So in any event, that is my comment. I don't know if there's any other information that I should give beforehand.
Well, it turns out that that's really not in our purview. We might be able to suggest how to go forward. And we have planning people here right on our stage.
Sure. So first, I'd like to ask if we can move through all the public comment for this portion of the meeting, and then I'm happy to respond to any inquiries that the commission may have in regards to the public comments received.
Okay, so we'll we'll.
I'll just hang out and.
Yeah, if you'll just hang out.
Thank you so much.
Go through.
Thank you for letting me speak. I appreciate it. I know you're busy.
Okey dokey.
So if we can just see if we have any other members of the public that wish to comment at this point?
Sure, there are several attendees online. Once again, to find information on participating, you can go to iSearchMonterey.org. I currently see no hands raised online.
Thank you.
So I guess let's go on with the public hearing.
I can respond to that public comment if the commission would like for me to do so. No, yeah, okay. So what the member of the public is referring to is a policy adopted by resolution by the planning commission. That's resolution number zero four dash zero zero three. Specifically, that policy requires that a site survey prepared by a licensed survey or civil engineer is submitted during the review of any project that proposes any new development that is within three feet of a required setback. As the member of the public stated, they are five feet from what is an inferred property line. And the setback in that location is four feet, so they are within three feet of that required setback. So based on the policy that was adopted by the planning commission in two thousand and four, the requirement is to submit a a survey prepared by a licensed surveyor. So to the extent that it's within the purview of this commission, it is an adopted resolution by the planning commission. The planning commission, for any reason, saw saw it necessary to revisit that policy. That's something that could possibly be agendized in the future, but we would take that direction from the commission.
I have a question, Levi. In a situation like that, do do they require a survey of the entire property or just get the information they're looking for, the carport in proximity to the?
That's an excellent question. So we would be looking specifically at for the area in which it's within that three feet to be surveyed. So correct, a partial survey would be accepted if that was the only area they were proposing development within three feet. Of course.
So what we need to do to agendize it?
So I think we would staff can agenda if there's a consensus amongst the commission to discuss that, staff can place that on an agenda for future discussion with the with the commission to then and then provide additional direction to staff after that, if there was revisions to the policy that the commission felt necessary.
So so can we just give you a quick headcount?
Perhaps we could just take informal, we could just take a vote on it, and that way we have a record.
Yeah, me too.
And this is to agendize the topic, not necessarily propose changes at this time.
Great. Can we do it for our next meeting? Because she seems to be.
I don't know. That's something we can pull together before the next meeting. We can obviously agendize it for the conversation to have, but if you would want staff to come back with any recommendations or anything like that, we would need more time.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Of course. Thank you.
Did that help? Did that help?
Thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
All right.
Okay, we're going to item number three. Consider Highway sixty eight at Jocelyn Canyon Road use permit UP twenty four dash oh oh four nine to allow modifications to an existing wireless communications facility on an existing utility pole within public right of way. Where am I?
We're going to be joined by contract planner Jerry Hiddleman for this presentation.
Yeah.
Applicant Greg Davis, Centerline LLC on behalf of AT&amp;T owner, public right of way. Exempt from SEQA for Article nineteen, section fifteen, three oh three, class three. I thought it was interesting that that they set this up so that we're going to poll number two first.
And that's been my doings.
Okay, good afternoon.
Welcome, Jerry.
Hello, everyone. Can you can you hear me?
Yes.
See the PowerPoint on the screen now?
Yes. Yes.
Okay, great. Good afternoon, Chair and Commissioners. As stated, this is a modification of an existing AT&amp;T wireless facility at Jocelyn Canyon Road and Highway sixty eight. There's an aerial of that area. So here's Highway sixty eight, Jocelyn Canyon Road, and as we'll see in the plans, the pole and project site is right at this corner over here. So I'll start with the project description. The ownership, it's in the public right of way. So the ownership is city of Monterey. As stated, the applicant is Greg Davis. The wireless carrier is AT&amp;T, also known as New Singular Wireless. And the purpose of the project is to provide improved quality, coverage and capacity for first net first responder platform and for the AT&amp;T network in the city. There's no zoning designation or general plan designation again because the property is in the public right of way. And as I'll show you on the plans and as we move through the presentation, they are removing two existing panel antennas on a utility pole, installing eight new panel antennas and removing four existing remote radio units and installing six new ones. And then installing some support equipment actually on the pole to consist of batteries and a new power plant and cabinets on the pole. So this proposal is considered an eligible facilities request under section sixty four oh nine. And that's of the Federal Middle Class Tax Relief and Job Creation Act. So under this act, the project is not a substantial change. As you'll see. So again, here is a site plan. Highway sixty eight runs this direction. Jocelyn Canyon Road is over here. We have a church parking lot and a slope over on the other side of the road.
Excuse me, Jerry. I have a question on what you just said.
Yes.
Is there a a burden line of what is new and what is a change versus old?
Yes, you'll see that I think on the next over here. This the next two sets of plans will show that, but basically the equipment is pretty close to the pole over here, maybe over in this location. And then they'll be expanding out a little bit this direction and this direction, as you'll see on the larger plans. So here's the equipment plan. This will not be extending out from the pole. So existing, the pole is over here, and they'll be doing some cabinets right on the pole itself. So existing, the pole's over here and they'll be doing some cabinets right on the pole itself. Now, here's, here's, I think, a better answer to your question. Here's the existing. So we have two antennas in this location that will be removed. Again, here's the pole over here with some support equipment. So those antennas were approximately in this location. And they'll be adding one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight antennas with some support equipment behind them on the actual pole at this location. Here's the elevation view. Again, here's existing. So you could see the two antennas approximately at the thirty foot elevation level coming off the pole. And then this is what the new antennas will look like. Now, I should point out, under the FCC eligible facilities request, they can go out as far as twenty feet in diameter from the pole. So these improvements would not go further than five feet from the pole, extending from the pole in each direction. So they can go twenty feet, still be an eligible facilities request. Here's good depiction of what's existing on the, out there right now. Here's the antennas. There's some support equipment down here on the pole. And then what they are doing is removing that existing support equipment, putting some new support equipment right here. It's actually a brown color. And then, as you can see, the eight new antennas would go up at the thirty foot level right at this location. There was an RF study done for this project and the proposed antennas are compliant with FCC radio frequency guidelines. No public safety RF limits are exceeded at the ground level or at adjacent properties. So here's, again, showing the occupational limit is right here. And then this would be the public limit for the FCC regulations. And again, up at the thirty foot level right here, this is probably more like twenty five feet down here above the ground level. And here is an elevational or a site plan view of those same RF arrays. And again, the occupational limit and then the public limit. So you can see that here's Jocelyn Canyon Road that it won't extend beyond the road right of way. Might go a little bit onto the, I believe this is a church property in this location. But up at the thirty, twenty five to thirty foot level. So we do have some special RF conditions. The post installation RF coverage report shall be submitted within thirty days of installation to ensure that exactly what you saw in this figure is what is placed out there at the site. And then the RF exposure training for all workers, display the wire carrier's contact information, as we've discussed on wireless projects in the past, and also other appropriate signage for workers who might be working on those poles. So with that, staff recommends that the planning commission approve the use permit twenty four oh oh four nine with the recommended findings and special conditions of approval. Thank you. I'm available for questions. I saw that the applicant is online, actually with his RF engineer. If you have any questions for them as well. Thank you.
Questions for staff?
Yeah, yes, I have a question. You mentioned, in addition to the additional antennas, there's some equipment going to be attached to that pole as well, some.
Correct.
Can you point out where that is?
Yeah, the equipment, again, is a brown color, but it's right in this location and this location.
So it's not, is there like a spec sheet on that? I'm just trying to get a feel for the size.
Yeah, I think it's shown right here. Here's the elevational view of the size. These two cabinets. And here's what it looks like in site plan view. So these two pieces of equipment that would be on the lower part of the pole, they do not release any RF emissions at all.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mike?
Jerry, when was this facility first put in there?
Let's see, I believe that's in the staff reports, I think, twenty sixteen or twenty eighteen. I'll have to take a look.
That was before we had the committees and before the city got its ordinances in place.
Yeah, I'm looking at the original approvals in twenty sixteen.
I'm sorry.
Twenty sixteen.
Yeah.
One of the things that the committee paid a lot of attention to is undergrounding cabinets as much as possible and the aesthetics. Aesthetics being the one area that the FCC allows the city the most discretion. In this particular case, we have a high traffic intersection with a cabinet sitting right beside the way. My question is, could we not underground that cabinet?
Yeah, these are existing cabinets that are approved in twenty sixteen. So I think those they're planning on retaining, they're not doing any work on these cabinets at all. Just some small support equipment on the pole.
Well, that goes to the aesthetics.
Right. So again, I'll, we'll be reminded, so under sixty four oh nine requests, these are oftentimes colocation requests of existing facilities. So that existing infrastructure may or may not even be the same carrier.
Well, and that's why I asked the question originally. What is the declaration of substantial changes?
Yeah, it's fairly well.
Is it just distance or is it a totality?
So it all deals with the proposed work. So when it comes to ground support equipment, it all deals with what's being proposed to be removed or replaced. There is limitations on how many ground support cabinets they can propose in addition to an existing facility. As Jerry mentioned, I don't believe they're proposing any additional ground mounted equipment in this, in this case. So I think.
Right. And that's up to four cabinets can be replaced under these regulations.
I've got a problem with, with, Mike says that there's a cabinet right next to the road. This is a high, a very high frequency intersection. And that cabinet looks real vulnerable to me. Just one truck and this whole system goes right down. And I think, I think there's a way, there's ways to armor those cabinets. That probably ought to be taken advantage of.
And, yeah, I don't know if, you know, around other structures, they'll sink a maybe a six inch steel casing filled with concrete
Yeah.
into the deck.
A lolly column, that's what those are called.
I don't see this. That's, that's, and you reminded me of something else, Mike. I got a call and a question of someone on the street regarding notifications on these, not just this one, but both projects. I was, if someone could explain to me who was notified of these changes that live or are adjacent to it.
Yeah, so the code requires that there be a notice sent by the applicant at the time of the submittal of the application to property owners within three hundred feet. And that's a property owner list that's provided by the city to the applicant. So that's first way of a notification. There is a second way of a notification at the time that the hearing is set. So again, mailers are owners within three hundred feet. And then we also do an onsite posting as well at the project site.
And one of my sources said that the church wasn't notified. That's why I'm asking the question.
Yeah, it's going to go to the property owner information that's on the assessor's role. So, yeah, the county assessor role.
And the motel?
Same thing.
Because I was also.
And I.
Were not notified.
Yeah. Oh, the motel, you're talking about the other location?
Yeah.
Yeah, I was like, well, they would be outside of three hundred feet. But yes, again, it goes back to whoever, whatever they have under the assessor. So it's uncommon that we have people say they weren't notified and then not aware of where, what information's on file with the county.
Thank you.
Sure. Yeah.
So Levi, I'm just curious. It's a scenic highway. Given the change and the scope of the antennas, are we allowed to make a request to put artificial foliage to hide the larger array that's up there?
You can require concealment measures on the new equipment. Yes.
Yeah.
That would be.
Because I'm, I'm clearly from the pictures, the, the new system is substantially more visible. And Highway sixty eight is a state scenic highway. So I, I would like to, to know if, what you would recommend in terms of the specific approach that we might look at as a an option for making the appearances of this a little bit better in terms of where they're making the biggest change, which is the antennas.
Yeah, I don't think staff would recommend any any unnecessary, and I mean that in more straightforward needed equipment on the utility pole. I think that would be problematic to add structures to the utility pole that are not utility related, given that it's a shared structure being used both for, for power infrastructure as well as multiple carriers and first responding communication.
Yeah, and so something I've seen that might help, and you can see the brown color on the pole down here helps. But sometimes if it's painted a certain color, that would help it blend in with either the sky or some background vegetation.
Yeah, I would agree. I think perhaps if you wanted to go that direction, applying certain color requirements to the equipment. Sometimes they do the equipment socks that they put on the antennas. I don't think it would be very effective to try to mask the utility pole as something other than a utility pole though.
The city doesn't own the utility pole though. Is that PG&E?
That's correct. So all of that goes through license and lease agreements with the city to operate within the right of way. But the pole itself.
I think this is one of the things that was considered during some of our meetings and that was, it's not mission creep, but it's product creep, is that particularly with more than one vendor on the pole, all the changes incrementally becomes a major visual change. And how do we keep up with that?
You don't.
Yeah, I think it's the.
That's my point.
I think it's the intent of the federal government that you don't.
I brought this up as a concern when they were changing out some equipment on the hotel down the street. And, you know, you have all these different carriers and they all have the right to change out their equipment. And all of a sudden, we're looking at pairs of antennas and then again and again. And the point is, is that there's no master plan for that particular location of how to accommodate future alterations. And I agree with you. I think visual creep is probably one of the worst things that we could be dealing with. So.
Should we maybe look at having a discussion on that visual creep?
So first, you know, the applicant's online, so maybe we should allow the applicant to present. And then we can direct some of these questions their way and see what the options they may have or be willing to suggest. And then we can discuss that.
Yeah, because it wouldn't be cheap to go stealth.
Well, I just think it's going to be limited, right? It's an existing utility pole. It's a little bit different than a, than a stealth structure designed to appear to be, you know, a monopine or something like that. I, I don't think putting foliage on this is going to really fool anybody. But there, I do think there are probably things based around the color that you can do to minimize the impact visually.
So should we hear from the?
Absolutely.
So we're, we're, we're out of questions. We're up to the applicant now.
Yeah, we'll let the applicant present and then, yeah, if we have further questions, we can, we can definitely bat those around.
Hi, everyone. Can you hear?
Yep.
Oh, yeah. Great. Hi, my name's Greg Davis. I am the applicant on behalf of AT&amp;T. I don't have a lot to add. Jerry covered it pretty well. But to answer your question about foliage, I personally have never seen socks that you would see like on a monopine on a utility pole. That may look, that may look a little strange. But I have seen antennas painted to match the pole. In this case, they would probably be painted brown to match the, the pole, similar to the equipment at the bottom of the pole. But I will say, not all antennas can be painted. And I know for a fact, some of these antennas that AT&amp;T is proposing here are, are the smaller air antennas. And I, I don't think those can be painted. And in that case, AT&amp;T usually uses something called three M concealment cover. And that's basically like a mirror reflective three M tape that they stretch over the, the antennas that kind of make them hard to see. It's a, it's a stealth measure. I'm looking at the plans here. I don't, I don't think that that's been added to this proposal. But in either case, I don't think that the city of Monterey can deny the project as it is because it does qualify under the federal Section sixty four oh nine. But that is something that we could still bring to AT&amp;T and see if that's something that they can do and would be willing to do.
You understand our concerns on the visual creep?
I do, yeah. And looking at the existing and the proposed, you know, there is a difference. But like I said, it's still within the, the federal guidelines. I think we're, as Jerry mentioned, we're jutting out about five feet from the pole. And they can go up to twenty feet. So, but I do understand what you're saying, like over time, if you keep going out five feet, five feet, it grows over time incrementally. But in the case at hand today, it's, it's well within AT&amp;T's design standard for sixty four oh nine.
Several places in this document and in the other project, I see you use a set of tools, AC, ASCE, hazard tools. Now, the city of Monterey went through a lot of meetings and we required testing by engineers. And they used, they use these tools, but one of the things, I mean, it doesn't reflect very well on the project. It says the representations of accuracy, completeness, reliability, et cetera. They don't warrant them. They don't put any faith in them. And according to your warnings in these documents, why are we going through this process if we can't put confidence in the tools that you're using?
And there's a question mark after that.
I'm, I'm sorry. I don't, I don't understand your question. You're, you're talking.
You, you put these warnings throughout the document that you cannot, these representations do not declare accuracy, completeness, reliability. Why are we doing?
Could you let me know where on the plans? You see that? I can.
The first one is, it's twice in the, in the tools mentioned on the, on your document. I think I can bring it up to attachment. Exhibit D.
Do you have a page number for me?
Well, it just says, ACAS, well, your pages don't necessarily reflect the mine. ASCE seven hazard tool is provided for your convenience. It's for informational purposes only, but then it goes into the difficulties that are not.
So are you referring?
The representation exhibited. So I just, and you do not use it as, does not intend, nor should anyone interpret the results of this tool to replace the sound judgment of a competent professional.
Are you referring to exhibit D, Commissioner Brassville, as the structural, the structural analysis?
Exhibit D is in David.
Yes, that's the structural analysis that's prepared. It's analyzing the, the structure.
It may be.
Itself.
Three of three.
Yeah, exhibit D is the structural analysis. So that's, that's just the. essentially speaking, is a third party structural analysis prepared for the structure itself. It's not for the plans. But I think it's because they're not construction documents at this point. So this is analysis of the proposed structure. At the time of building permits, there'll be construction documents where they will have to have a stamp plan from a structural engineer based on the work that's being proposed at that time.
I'm just pointing out that if you put these, all these warnings in there, it doesn't reflect well for the people who are reading them. And I'm not an engineer.
I think it's a liability statement that they put in there in place in case the applicant were to move forward to get building permits. And then they applied for something differently than what the analysis was prepared for. And then therefore they're not covered. But an additional analysis and stamped engineer drawings would be provided at the time of construction documents.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So Levi, given everything that's been said, I mean, my only concern is appearance. I like the idea of whatever we might be able to do to reduce the expanded physical nature of the antenna system that they're proposing to, to put in. I mean, can we do anything on that front, given that the applicant said that given the federal rules, there's really not much we can do or?
Yeah, so the applicant's correct in our, in our interpretation of the law and the project as proposed, it does qualify as a 6409A request. So he's correct. And as far as denying the request would, would not be recommended. As far, I do think there are some concealment options. It just seems like there's some unknowns at this point, what's feasible based on the equipment that's being installed. So I think from what I've heard, my recommendation to move forward would be a special condition of approval to be applied to apply concealment features to the project as feasible. And then I would recommend that the commission establish some type of priority based on feasibility, that being if socks is the number one preference, but may prove to be infeasible. You know, painting may be the number, the second preference, maybe feasible for some of the equipment, but not all. And then the reflective tape that the applicant mentioned could be a third, you know, preferred option for concealment. I think maybe between the three of those and working with staff, we can, we can get as much concealment on this facility as possible.
Would that be a special, special?
Special condition of approval that you guys could apply in a motion. That's correct.
I'd make the motion that we go with staff recommendations, including that recommendation.
That was sent into the record, so we can take that as a motion.
I'll second it.
I think we should pause. Actually, we have not taken public comments, so we should stop and see if we have anyone online that would like to speak on this matter.
Okay, so we, we don't have anybody in the audience here. Is there anyone on the internet?
There is a hand raised online.
Well, it's your.
Telephone number ending in 902. Go ahead and speak.
Yes, this is Nina Beatty. First of all, in the question about notification to property owners, there should be verification to the PC, the planning commission, and each project who was notified so that, so that you can proceed with this proceeding. Otherwise, there's a big question overhanging this. I don't see any certification of pole loading by a professional engineer. As you know, the overloading of utility poles caused the 2007 Malibu fire. This is a substantial increase in the amount of equipment on this particular pole. And it's the city's liability if you approve it because the city is in control of the right of way. And that's a problem. When, if there's a problem like fire, that falls back on the city. Their Mr. Hiddleman slide was incorrect about public exposure guidelines. These are not public safety guidelines. These are public exposure guidelines. There's a big difference. And they are currently in a legal limbo due to the 2021 lawsuit and court remand back to the FCC and the FCC has not responded. Once again, you're faced with a project that extends onto private property with an overage of the FCC exposure guidelines without the owner necessarily knowing or having been informed about that. And this is, this is a new extension. The photo sims don't match the plans. This is a, this is a typical photo sim that's not clear. And as we found with the 13 cell towers, the photo sims are typically not matching what is reality. This tower blocks my right to travel freely in Monterey and using Highway 68 and unlawfully incommodes my access to the public right of way. There's mischaracterized purpose. This is a capacity project. One of its main purposes is a capacity project for the Naval Postgraduate School AT&amp;T collaboration in the Slammer Lab. This was noted in Naval Post Graduate School's press release that they were going to use the network. There are three arms of that network and one of them is up Highway 68. I also warn you about the fire danger. Cell towers catch fires. This is also a smart meter on it. And it also affects the trees around there, which a new paper has talked about the increased terpene production of trees as they stress from this radiation impacting them. So you're actually increasing the fire danger in the Jocelyn Canyon area. Finally, I'd like to say I personally don't want concealment. I think people should know what's on these poles, what's on these towers and no, no attempt at concealing it. So people can be warned and stay away from these things. Because as the research continues to show, not only for the general public, but for disabled people like me, we have to stay away from these due to already being disabled by these emissions.
Thank you, Ms. Beatty. Where were we?
Do we have any others?
I'll continue with my motion.
There are no other hands raised online.
Okay, then we can formally close the public hearing. The commission continue.
So there was a motion.
We have a motion from Commissioner Brassfield and a second from Commissioner, was it from Commissioner Blues?
Yeah.
All right, roll call, please.
Chair Dawson?
Yes.
Vice Chair Blues?
Yes.
Commissioner Brassfield?
Yes.
And Commissioner Fletcher?
Yes.
That motion carries with a vote of four. The decision is appealable within three days to the city council. We have applications online or in our planning office.
Right. Excellent. Now we can go to number four. Consider Highway 68 at Homestead Road. Use permit UP 240048 to allow modifications to an existing wireless communication facility within public right of way. Applicant Greg Davis, Centerline LLC on behalf of AT&amp;T. Owner, public right of way exempt from CEQA per Article 19, Section 15, 303, Class. Jerry?
Thank you again, Chair and Commissioners. As stated, this is a modification of another AT&amp;T facility just down the road at Homestead Road. So I'll show you. So here's Homestead Road, which goes into the Monterey Airport, which is located over here. Then as stated before, there might be a motel or some other buildings in this location. And here again is State Highway 68. In this case, there's a pole and support, some support equipment behind the airport sign, as you'll see. So just wanted to show you the location. This is the pole. Here is the airport sign. There's some support equipment behind this sign. And this is where the only improvements will occur. As you'll see, no improvements on the pole for this one. So do have same ownership, city of Monterey. It's in the right of way. Greg Davis is the applicant's representative. AT&amp;T is the carrier, same purpose. But improved coverage and capacity for first net first responders and the AT&amp;T platform. It's in the public right of way, so no zoning or general plan designation. This one's a little bit more simpler. They're just removing one cabinet, installing one new cabinet, installing 12 new batteries in that support equipment area and some other related support equipment like cables and so forth. Again, a 6409 eligible request. So this one is not doing any major changes. You can change again up to four cabinets. This is only changing one cabinet. Here's a more detailed plan. Here's Homestead Road, Highway 68. Here is the sign, the airport sign, and this is where the equipment is right behind the sign. It's been there again since about 2016. And here is the pole. No, no work at the pole. So this just shows what's on the pole. There's two antennas that come out from the pole, as you saw in the existing picture of the photo of the site. So again, here's the existing sign for the airport, Monterey Airport. The cabinets are totally behind the sign, are do not jut above the sign at all and are in this location. So they're changing out equipment here in the dark gray, light gray areas right here, new batteries and a new cabinet. So here's the elevation view. Pole means same. Here's the sign and the equipment is behind the sign. And they're, they'll be putting up new, they already do have RF caution sign. So I should point out that the support equipment will not emit any radio frequency emissions. All those come from the antennas that will not be changed on this pole. So again, a picture of that, and it is, as you can see, very well concealed as you drive into the airport. So with that, we didn't require an RF report because they're not changing out the antennas. So staff recommends that the commission approve use permit 240048 with the recommended findings and conditions of approval and the resolution. And again, I'm available for questions along with staff and the applicant.
Questions with staff? No. Holy mackerel. Well, it looks like they hid the, the equipment for me this time. The trucks can't get it.
Right.
Okay, so can we hear from the applicant?
Yeah, we can check in with Mr. Davis.
Yeah, just to reiterate, no visual impact here, no visual change. We're not touching anything on the pole. AT&amp;T is removing a cabinet, replacing it, and it's allowing some batteries. And that's it for this.
Something, something that's, that's, yeah, that's in my head here. We're, we're, a couple of us here are cert members. And so, so we're first responders and this is a first responders net. So I think, I think AT&amp;T would do well to, to make that public because for, for most of us, that's, that's really an important thing is, is communication when, when you have, when you have a tragedy out there.
Yeah. Yeah, it's, it's a big part of their network. I don't think a lot of people know about it. I'm not sure what AT&amp;T does to, to make that known, but it's, it's included on all of our projects that I have, or modifying existing sites.
Thank you very much.
Sir, I have a question on the signage. Is it an FCC standardized signage or is it? How much liberty do the companies have to deviate from different types of warnings? We've had signage problems in the past.
I see. Yeah, this, this signage is required by the FCC. It's not an AT&amp;T designed signage. But yeah, the FCC decides what signage and where it is to be placed.
Thank you.
Dan? Okay, can we take a look and see if there's anyone with a hand up?
Sure. Nina Beatty would like to provide public comment. Nina, you may go ahead.
Yes, this is Nina Beatty. This, I have several questions. What type of batteries are in this battery unit? And the equipment cabinets that are replacing, are they going to increase the output of the antennas so that there is actually greater RF exposure or radiation levels? The first net was a bad, a business decision by the city of Monterey. So with first net, there was another system, emergency network that the city used. So this was, there, this is a redundant system. Again, there's the issue of notification to property owners. Was the motel, which appears clearly from the overhead, to be within 300 feet? Was it notified? The, also the pole, there's not pole loading issues on this one. The, the original project blocked my right to travel freely. It incommodes my access. And here we have an airport that I can't even go to because of this and other towers that are nearby. Again, this is part of the capacity project for the Naval Post Graduate School AT&amp;T collaboration. And these will be, this is not just merely civilian use of these towers, but will be military use. And we don't know what the levels of that are, that of RF that will be experienced by people, including people in the hotel, in the motel nearby. So I would like to know what, what type of batteries and if this is going to be an increase in RF exposure or levels due to the equipment being changed out. Thank you.
You, Jerry or Greg?
I'll pass it on to Craig.
I will defer to the applicant for specifics, but I will note there is a spec sheet on the batteries included in the plans. They're pretty typical power storage batteries. Yeah, Greg, if you wouldn't mind, speaking towards the increase of RF emissions on this facility and whether or not it's going to happen.
Yeah, so no increase in RF here at all. This is just an equipment swap. The spec sheets where the batteries were included. They're 198H batteries. The AH, I believe, refers to the capacity of the batteries. There is a limit on the capacity of the batteries that can be at these sizes. This is well within the limit of the capacity. But just to reiterate, no, no increase in RF here.
I'm seeing that RF analysis was submitted with this application as well that also shows that no increase of exposure.
Anyone, anyone else got a hand up?
There are no other hands raised.
No other hands? Okay, so let's bring it back for comments and, and.
This is a 6409.
Yeah.
Plainly issued. It's basically swapping out equipment. And eliminates a lot of our requests.
Our quest we'd like to make. Yeah, we can't. Dan? No?
I'll make a motion though.
Good man.
I'll make a motion to prove as staff has provided.
I'll second that.
Second by Mike. Roll a call, please.
Sure. Chair Dawson?
Yes.
Vice Chair Blues?
Yes.
Commissioner Brassfield?
Yes.
And Commissioner Fletcher?
Yes.
The motion carries with a vote of four. The decision is appealable within three days to the city council. We have applications online or in the planning office.
Terrific. And now we have, Mr. Comments?
So Levi, I mean, this is going to be one that is probably tough. The Sheraton Hotel was built a long time ago and I'm not sure what the conditions for approval for that were. But I'm assuming that they included the doors that cover the industrial spaces on that building. On the Franklin side, there's no door. It's always open. You can see into where they put the trash and all that other stuff. And I'd like to know if there's a condition of approval where that should be repaired. So the door is put back in place and is usable. So public doesn't have to stare into the bowels of the Marriott hotel.
You're right, that is a tough one.
Dan says yes.
Yeah, let me look into that. It's likely they, as you said, it was constructed some time ago. We can see what we have on file as far as architectural review approvals. Typically, there are, they are expected to keep those things screened from view. So I'm happy to look into that, but I won't, don't have a response for you offhand.
Pacific side has a door and they close it. And I've seen it open. Pacific side has a door and they close it. And I've seen it open periodically. The Franklin side looks like the door has been removed.
Yeah, they definitely appear to use the Franklin front and just the primary entry into their backup house. Yeah.
Never seen it ever close, but I've never seen it being, you know, used constantly like it needs to be open. So I'd like to see some enforcement action if the city has the the authority given city code to make sure that that door is reinstalled and that it is closed when it's not being in use. It's too busy of a part of town and the aesthetics, I think, are impacted substantially by that vast space always being open to, to public view when it doesn't need to be.
Sure. We're happy to look into that and we'll report back.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Your's comments, yes?
Number one, and I've mentioned this in the past, I had a young lady talk to me about we're seeing a lot more vacancies than businesses. Businesses typically are required to put in bathrooms, public to use. That's one of the functions that that people are about, about, we need to make sure that they have that capability to use those facilities. And she was complaining, a lot of businesses now are refusing to let people use the bathroom. Is that a city requirement?
Sure. So there's actually, there's building code and health department requirements for allowing public restrooms depending on use and intensity of development. You've mentioned this in the past and I've, I've confirmed with our building officials that there are building code requirements for
Building code requirement so that
Correct. So the city
Go to them.
Uh, yeah, correct. To the building department, the city can enforce upon them.
Okay, so my next comment goes to what we had today. More signage and more visual aspects. And as Dan put it, we're having visual creep. Should we schedule that for a discussion of the planning commission of what maybe of changes we can make to our ordinance? That's, it's becoming more of a problem, particularly the visual aspect, that changing these poles, adding new equipment, adding more equipment to the poles as well as the side of buildings.
An example of creep, creep might be the pole that we looked at today on Highway 68. You know, so this equipment is five feet out. Does the next company and their equipment need to go eight feet out to be past that? And the next one like 15 feet out? I mean, because you have no idea where you're going with these, these proposals. And I, I'm not even sure we have any purview to be able to do anything about it anyways. But it's, it's just something that needs to be taken into consideration. Why, why was there never like a thought about putting a master plan together for landlords that have multiple companies on their buildings? I mean, some would probably care about the aesthetics, but some probably will not. And it's just something I'm watching as we, these things come through. So.
And on the signage issue, that's why I asked the question of clarification, is it standardized? Because I've actually looked at the signage in one building and it had three different companies in there. And we talked about the phone numbers, who to call?
Who are you going to call?
Yeah. It's no master number for that site. So it's, I think we need to talk about it.
Yeah, I think, I don't think it's a bad idea to have a refresher for the entire commission. Obviously, you get new commissioners and some of our commissioners served on the subcommittee, so they're a little bit maybe more informed as far as what's permitted under 6409. But I think it could be a, definitely a viable, valuable exercise to perhaps have a refresher on what is, what our purview is under 6409 and what we can, what our legal right is. So
It's more like what our purview isn't.
Correct.
6409.
Yeah, I think it does get tricky to your, to your comments, Commissioner Fletcher. It's tricky because it's a, it's a balancing act. There was, there's obviously a value in co-locating. It limits the amount of new standalone facilities that cities see.
It was encouraged.
It, it was, it's very much encouraged. So I think there's some benefits to 6409 that it streamlines the permitting process for co-location and the use of existing facilities, which you could argue minimizes impact by limiting the number of new facilities. And it, and it basically requires carriers to allow co-location on their facilities. But to your point, it does create this snowballing expansion effect on these existing facilities, which can feel like you're kind of losing control of. So I do think it's a great idea to possibly have some training and we can kind of, we can see if we, we have wireless consultants, both on the legal side as well as on the technical side. So we can maybe put something together. I think it could be a useful exercise. And, and that way, as we discuss these things that are agendized, we have a much better idea of, of what our parameters are in the framework that we're working within.
I think that'd be very helpful, particularly in consideration of the number of these applications that are coming through. It seems like that's really only planning commission's business right now.
They, they trend with the equipment upgrades. So as you know, 5G is, you just turn your television on and that's all anyone, all the wireless companies are talking about. So obviously, in the rollout of these equipment upgrades, you know, we get a lot of these requests, but you're a hundred percent right. That seems to be the bulk of what our requests are at this point.
And, and one other aspect of it, you mentioned the training. This commission has never had a safety briefing on what is, what the really the dangers you're illustrated to us mean. And to city employees as well, but maybe we should consider that too. So when we, we talk about these, and the changes, the colors change. Sometimes it's green, sometimes it's yellow, and sometimes it's red. So we, we don't have a standardized color code either, but we, we need to understand what it is that everybody else is talking about. That those of us who are not engineers have a better understanding of the safety concerns.
Well, something, something I worked with in, when I was in cable is that these poles need to be climbed. So you can't just put a bunch of stuff in the middle of the pole that's going to block the route up. Because the PGD guys need to get to the top of that pole and, and they get really testy when they're blocked.
Yeah.
Let me tell you. Anyway, so we need to, there's, there's a lot, it's, it's, it's not singular. There's, there's a lot of complexity to this.
Absolutely. Yeah, I think we can put together a training for a future day. And then after that, I think it may spur some ideas if we, if we do want to revisit the ordinance, the wireless ordinance. And if we think we have changes that would be useful to incorporate.
We anticipated that.
Yeah, so I did too.
Yeah, it would be good to have it as a, a part of our public meeting too. So everybody else can get that same information, safety, you know, with the
Yeah, any, anytime we're all together, it's a, it has to be a public meeting. So anytime, anytime we convene, it'll be public.
Yeah.
Okay.
Great idea.
Comments?
Oh, one more comment. I mean, I'd be curious about what the state overlay is for scenic highway. I mean, given scenic highway rules, I think there are requirements that are added to whatever code issues that we're looking at as a city point for
We had those mentioned when we did the car storage facility.
Yeah, again, I'll just remind you, there, there definitely are additional requirements in, for scenic highways. Again, that's, those are state designated scenic highways and a lot of the legal parameters we're working with in here are federal. So they don't necessarily acknowledge those state parameters in the same way that we would another type of project. You're correct. Any other type of development, we're, we're, we have policies in our general plan that provide guidance for development along our state designated scenic highways.
I seem to remember we were prevented from putting up a cross at that church at, at that corner. And I said, what, what, it's a scenic, it's a scenic corridor. Can't put up a cross on a scenic corridor in front of a church. Like, come on.
Side note to the scenic highway up there. Kudos to whoever planted all those poppies along the side of the road.
Actually just read it was Caltrans. It's part of their erosion control and I agree. Looks very nice. I agree. I was just reading an article about that yesterday and I was pleased to see it was Caltrans that is part of their erosion control. So it's kind of a dual purpose.
It's nice.
Thank you. Okay, are we done?
I could give a quick staff update. Won't take me long. As noted in the report, just to follow up to the June 18 city council meeting, the mayor and the council did consider appointments to our boards, committees and commissions. We did have two planning commissioners that were up for reappointment. That is Commissioner Freeman and Commissioner Latassa. As you see, they're not here. That's not because they weren't reappointed, I can assure you. They both were reappointed. So congrats to both Commissioner Latassa and Commissioner Freeman for being reappointed. We look forward to seeing them at the next meeting. And there are currently no items tentatively scheduled for the July 9 meeting. I will remind everyone, we do have the joint planning commission and city council meeting that'll be taking place July 16th. So please put that on your calendars and I'll be sending up a follow-up email. We'll also be sending out noticing for that meeting next week. And we are finalizing the EIR, the final EIR for that project that's expected to also be posted online for, for the public next week as well. So
And that's at seven?
It will be at seven, July 16th.
Okay, guys. We're adjourned at 5:05.